I haven't received anyone's feedback. I thought we were gonna do is go through it, people's thoughts on where the highlighting on it. How which which.
I sent you mine. I sent you mine a week and a half ago, ten days.
I'm writing on yours, but I can.
It was red.
We're the only two that I would've got.
Mine was yellow and blue.
But my my understanding was that we were gonna have a discussion here tonight about it, not that I was gonna sit down and try to assimilate everybody's different thoughts. I I it just makes sense to, I think, go through it, everybody agree on or some consensus on what particular sentence should go with what particular thing, you know, I don't.
So Jeff did a change?
You don't have yours then? Oh.
So Jeff, did it change?
He sent it to Christine.
I did, I sent, I think I forwarded that back to Jeff. What'd you call it, got Peter's?
Might've, I I think I might've got Peter's.
I hated mine because it looked good on the screen and then on the printed, it was opaque.
So I but no, it wasn't my understanding that I was gonna sit down and try to figure out and vote for myself.
It was highlighting.
I'm looking for you guys to do.
So.
I've got mine, I've got it all highlighted, and I assume that everybody could go through theirs.
Jeff, Jeff, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So it has not changed since we saw it last, or has it changed?
No.
Okay, so.
What we're gonna do is this.
No, understood.
Okay.
So I just wanna know, we reviewed it last time, you know, you did a nice job on it, and we looked at it, and we had a lengthy discussion based on that, so the base case, I'll call it, is still has still is still the same.
What yeah, what we have is this document, which I think was relatively comprehensive about all the things that these people could do.
Right.
And and I've highlighted in yellow what I think planning board's person would do, and then I've unhighlighted, not left unhighlighted, the the things that the person who's the other job is. And and I found that they really, they they tracked the paragraphs.
Now, my understanding, I think you were saying that that Michael's Michael Bartlett was gonna set up the RFP, whether we came up with anything in the next, between now and the next meeting.
I'll be honest, Michael gave this document to the selectmen in December, and you guys received it through me in January. We've missed a few meetings for snowstorms. Mike Lamarc were here early February, you discussed it at your last meeting. He's expecting you to make a decision and and give him some feedback. If he can't make a decision, then he's of the mindset to move forward. You know, so it's in his mind, he figures two months is enough time to look at an issue. So I would hope you guys can give him some feedback.
Does everybody have a copy?
I thought we were pretty clear to him.
He needs some specifics from you.
Can can we at least?
If there are.
Can we at least send him some notice that, in fact, we've sort of, I think, a consensus seems to be that there are two two positions that we think should be divided up, and we will be talking about the different, functions of each position. I mean, we're not ironclad on that yet, but but I think there seems to be consensus. And then, you know, if I'm wrong, does anybody come in?
I'd be happy to to redo mine, because I I added where there was overlap with different boards, and I inserted the names of the boards, so that they would be very clear how we divide it up with the existing staff. I'd be happy to send that to everyone.
Well, but.
That just takes another two weeks, Peter, and it's not.
Not to be two weeks, I can do it in two days.
Okay.
Can you go through it tonight?
Yeah, that my son.
Well, I don't have it here.
Okay, so I'd like to propose a sort of a approach moving forward, because we are not making a great deal of progress. We had the base that Jeff worked on and modeled. We, the biggest concern was that with this new position, that the planning board would lose the staffing and support and expertise of a Christine-like individual. Planning coordinator in this reorganization and appointment of a new planning director. And this is along the lines that I suggested the last time, is that we write a letter and articulate that we believe the position as described, or as laid out, appears to overload the planning director and which yields insufficient time and resources to the planning board. And we've outlined what we think the roles and responsibilities are needed for the planning board, and we'd like a response from the town manager as to how he is going to accommodate providing the same or more resources to the planning board with this new reorganization. So that then allows him to look at what we've proposed and come back and say, understand, or whatever his response, but I understand what you're telling me is a problem, or is a perceived problem, and here's how I'm going to address it. And that either will be a dedicated resource sufficient to meet our requirements, or some other explanation of how the tasks, roles, and responsibilities that Christine currently fills will be taken care of.
But rather than going on a general basis like that, can't we recommend specifically that, in fact, that there be two positions?
Well, you know, I I'm not so much worried about, you know, 'cause it's like there are, and I don't know the number, but let's say there within upstairs, there are four to five people, you know, conservation and other land, ZBA and other support and administrative. I'd like I'd like him to come back and say, well, in your reorganization, tell us how you're going to allocate those resources sufficient to support the planning board as articulated in the job description. I don't really care how what happens behind the scene, I just wanna know what I'm getting. If he has to take one person and say, okay, you're dedicated at the planning board, and that's your primary role and responsibility, a support person like a Christine, and the planning director will be supervising them, that's fine. You know, as long as that person's qualified and delivers an equivalent amount of service to the planning board, I don't much care what's going on behind the scenes. So I just wanna know that that's gonna be taken care of, and that.
Well, it's gonna be his opinion is the problem, it's not gonna be a tangible, actual individual, you see what I'm saying?
Well, he has to convince us that that, in fact, is true, or guarantee that that will, in fact, occur. So, I mean, you know, we can go around and around on this, but I'm I'm just, I'd like to.
We we can start with a budget, it seems to me. He's taking the full budget from the planning board and filling it with one person, and the planning board has nobody. So we start, and we slap his hand, we say, no, our budget is going to be for our planning, the plan coordinator for all subdivision and special permits and so forth. Then if he says, well, I want half of your thing, then you say, fine, and you match it with another half. But I think the budget is the key way to get the job description.
And I think we we make it clear, we wanna hire the planning coordinator.
Yes.
I have the job description that's the job description of hers, and that's what I would use right now and say, Michael, we're going to hire, the money is in our budget, if he wants to take some of it, then he has to figure that out. But I'm not going to him to say, well, what do you think, here's what we want, what do you think's the best way to do it? No, we have the right to hire somebody, we can't function without that person.
Well, I understand that.
And his attitude the other, the first time was, well, we'll get you someone to do the minutes. That's what he thinks we need, period. That's just not.
That's what I said.
What'd he say?
He said there would be someone to do the minutes, he didn't say that.
Well, he said if you need somebody, somebody can do the minutes.
But that wasn't the only thing that person was gonna do, he didn't he didn't get that. And what what I did, just so you guys know, if you're familiar with this thing I put together, was I basically looked it through and saw that if you take it paragraph by paragraph, the first paragraph, for example, is coordination of town planning enforcement. That's the other provision. They wanna coordinate, fine, great. Assistance in town planning, that's the Christine-like provision, and that's paragraph two. Three, support of town boards, again, those all go to Christine does. Four, same thing, and then five, assistance with enforcement of town decisions, other person upstairs.
Yeah.
Make a report to the town, let that person do it. And then seven, it would be both but both people. But the way I'd originally drafted this thing was so that it it had paragraphs devoted to the kind of things that Christine does for us, and then other coordination and enforcement stuff that this other person would do. So that's how I.
I found that to be generally true, there were a couple of crossovers, which I showed and highlighted, but I mean, I agree with you, you can pull that apart very quickly into two jobs, and I think we ought to present it to the town manager that way.
And have a letter that states that.
That's what I described to the selectmen when it was first broached, that it sounded like two jobs, and one of the selectmen echoed that that thought.
So how do we move it forward? How do we move it forward?
We saw one possibility, if if you guys agree with with the way I look at this, is that the new job that they're coming up with handles the stuff in my paragraph one, paragraph five, and paragraph six.
I don't have it in front of me, so it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, here, I'll show it to you, if you wanna see my.
So the paragraphs one, five, and six.
I mean, I have, I I think that this was missing some of the day-to-day.
Well, you can look at my version too, that's why I sent it to you, Christine, I figured you'd unscramble it very quickly.
I tried to stay out of this, Peter.
I forwarded it to Jeff. I had a headache, so I wouldn't expect her to.
I know what I do on a daily basis.
Well, I think I probably got it right.
This is the new person upstairs, okay? Paragraph two, assistance, this is what, this is this.
That's why it's highlighted, that's Christine's.
I know, but let's just look at this, because let's see what's missing in it, is what I'm saying. That's solid, that's what she does, right? Paragraph three, good, because that keeps her focused on the planning.
This is Rob's.
Critical, this is all critical, that's like.
Four different.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This is your writing from Peter Clark.
I know it.
And that was my opinion about what was wrong, it was four different positions. But I sent you.
Right, this is this is the only one that has any relevance.
Good, so can you do me a favor? Can you just extrapolate that out and put it on one page and say, this is what we need? Send it to me, or do you want, how do we wanna do this, what's easiest for you?
My suggestion is that we, I think the easiest thing, 'cause I I Mark knows that we're talking about this tonight, I told him. I didn't know if he'd show up, he didn't, but I I get it. And and look, I don't know if I if if I pass this around, it would take five minutes for people to look at it. If people can sign on to the yellow being our person, and the non-highlighted being the new person, or throw out whatever changes you've got, my bet is it won't be huge, and we can get this done tonight, and Christine can send a letter to Mark, well, does that make sense?
I endorse that, and I will send you my version, 'cause there are a couple of small changes.
We're gonna get one thing done tonight.
Maybe when you review this, you'll see additional additional things you can hand right in there, Peter? Well, I can't do that that fast, I'm not that clever, but I I can't give you, 'cause I spent two days working on it, and I wanna just send it to you, and I'm sorry.
All right, but Peter, we're trying to get this completed.
I understand.
So we'll get ninety-five percent of what you had. It won't be perfect, but we're not done. We need to advance this.
I sent it to you.
I got it, Peter, I got it, and I got a headache reading it, because there were so many colors in it, I couldn't understand where you were going with it, so.
I don't I don't know if it's necessary to sign.
I would also.
No, 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 just read it and see if you agree.
I would also.
In concept, I agree with it, so I I don't I don't have any problem. I I I get confused with with a lot of the, my feeling was the Board of Health was was a little bit.
He pulled that out of there. He pulled the Board of Health out of there.
Yeah, you can look at whatever.
That was the only thing that I but I.
And the ZBA out of there, that the person, the physician would be at, would be with us, period. But I would like to say, Ed, that it ought to be, it's not a full-time job. This position is not a full-time job. So I think the only thing we ought to do is condition that, the description, and say this is a three-day-a-week job.
Which one do you choose?
This job, our job coordinator.
Coordinator.
How about the flow chart that's on the back page?
Christine's currently doing thirty hours a week, that's that's.
Took that right off of there. I didn't put that flow.
Um, I mean.
Well, all right, then let's say thirty hours, but she's also doing HDC, and she's been also answering to Michael, and she's been answering to Woo-Hoo, she's been doing the grant, I mean.
That's true, that's true.
And that doesn't always happen.
I'd like to hear again what Jeff just said.
Yeah, I didn't put a flow chart in there, the the person in yellow, which was Christine's job, reports to us. The other person, you know, I suppose, to the extent that you're in the coordination, I don't care who they report to.
You're right.
Let me say, coordinate with us too, which I think is the idea of the position. But they would do enforcement, so they, you know, we could ask them a couple of.
I don't, I'm not I'm not a lawyer, but under the law, as I understand it, a planning director has to report to the planning board, and 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 the other person that's being described, you could call them the.
No, that's what, the town meeting voted to get the the town manager, a planning director, to deal with all land use projects and new developments in the town. And that's what's a vote of town meeting, I accept this completely.
You do, that's great, okay. She's sure to do it.
I'm good with it, I was good with it the first time, and I'm sure it's fine now.
That's good.
That's one advantage of having to be late.
Whatever.
So.
But Jeff.
What are we doing with this?
When the town manager, yeah, when the town manager went to town meeting, and he said, all boards have come together and suggest that we have a director of planning that was focusing on new developments and all kinds of things, which are described in that job description as a new initiative, and it has to do with expanding the the rate base, I mean, not the rate base, but the tax base of the town, and there'll be new projects, whether it's at the dump or somewhere else. But what we do to day-to-day with subdivision control, with A&R plans, and all the special permits, he's taken that away from us completely, so that's why we're fighting back. I think it's very simple, and Jeff has has divided it up ninety percent right.
Okay, let's, okay, we've done it now.
I think we have, I think we have a document.
So we need to get a letter and send it, which we can, it should be, it should be copied to the board, I think.
So Jeff, you said you had a conversation with Mark relative to this.
I didn't.
Can you?
He messaged me, I messaged him back.
So was it substantive, or was it just a check-in?
Just check-in.
Okay. So let me just understand what we're doing, we're going to send a letter to.
Mark.
Mark, and what are we saying?
To Mark? I thought this was. That our view of the situation is that there ought to be two separate positions. One, known as the Christine position, which is highlighted in yellow on the draft I gave her, which she will then turn into.
Planning coordinator.
Yeah, I call it a planned coordinator, because it's the subdivision plan, the A&R plan, the special permit.
Whatever, and then the other position that he is gonna fill, that they discussed, is the the paragraphs which are not highlighted, okay? And that's our, that's our director of planning.
Well, I would like to recommend that we don't send a highlighted version, that we'll send a job description.
No, I.
Specifically, that she'll call it and.
I can I can send you a.
You can sort it back out, that's not that hard.
I can I can send you a word version of that.
Are you, are one of you gonna draft the letter, that's my question, to Mark and Michael?
To Mark.
Sure.
Since it, again, it should, this one should come from you guys. I I draft letters on behalf of your board alumnus.
No, it should come from the chairman.
Chairman ought to sign it.
I'm sorry, I.
You should sign a cover letter that says, here and enclosed is the planning coordinator position. The planning board has reviewed the description from the town manager, and this is the position that we are recommending. A three-quarter time, whatever you, thirty-hour-a-week position, or a twenty-five-hours-a-week position.
For the planning board.
For the planning board.
Yeah, that.
Anything else he wants to do is fine. And I don't think we need to get into what they wanna do with the director of planning and inspections, that's not our concern.
Well, I think it, I think it is, 'cause I think we do want someone to coordinate enforcement, that's one thing we're trying to perform.
They asked us what we needed, what we needed is that description.
Right, but he wants to cover all the bases from his drafts, so we wanna make sure that we're we're.
So what do you wanna say, Lilac?
So I think you wanted, I I don't see.
Articulate two positions.
Yeah, articulate the two positions, and I actually don't, what is the problem with with sending a highlighted?
I I just think it's cleaner, they asked us what we wanted, we should have it as, we should all have a copy of it, 'cause we've said it, but this is a little broken. I think it's just cleaner to have this two different jobs.
Who's taking our responsibility for writing the letter?
I will, Ed, it it should come from Ed, the chairman.
I got that, who's writing it?
I I said it should come from Ed, and if you need help writing it.
Does he know?
I will help you write it.
How about you write it, and I will sign it if it's something.
I will send you back the draft when I pull the two.
Yes, you pull the two drafts.
The positions apart, yes, thank you.
And I think I articulated a lot of it in my cover letter of my email, you can look at that, I think it gives a guidance.
See, I've not seen your letter while I sent it to everyone.
Christine, do you want these back?
Yes, before you go tonight, all of this, I just, the Weston and Sampson reports on the pool, is there anybody who needs to see those in a document form, or, I mean, you've received some of this online?
Yeah, I got it all.
Does anybody need a hard copy, if you do, raise your hand.
I'm gonna take.
I'd like to take it home.
I just want that.
I just I just need to know preferences, who wants the hard copy, so Peter?
Yeah, this is.
And Claudia?
I'd like to see this too.
And Rob.
What worries me is that.
Can I take it and then you want to?
I just want to know who has.
No, you said you eliminated it.
Okay.
This is the part that you want coming back?
But it won't stay eliminated, he'll bring it back up, it's part of why the whole town is gonna work through him. And I don't see us, I don't see us legally, that's our charge.
Well, the coordination between committees, so the right hand knows what the left hand is doing.
I don't have any problem with that.
All right, and then the enforcement, that's, I don't have a problem with that either, but. Those were the two major paragraphs, which would go to the other position.
This is yours.
So I tried to be very clear that, you know, and Christine will show you everything, but she can take that copy home if you want. But I mean, Claudia, Claudia.
Yeah, Claudia was.
Send it back, I'll work that one.
She's gonna write the. Because I I I share your.
Christine, you're you're going to divide that up into two letters, right?
Two just job descriptions.
Two job descriptions.
Yes, and I'm gonna, you're gonna send it to me, and I'm gonna write a letter, and I'm gonna send that to you, and you're gonna send the whole package to Mark, that's gonna be under your, it's my mark, okay?
But Jeff ought to look at it somewhere in between there also.
I'm happy to, if you want to.
Well, just just so we don't avoid clerical error, I mean, it's his writing, he ought to have some.
Well, it isn't his writing, it's my letter that's gonna be written, everything else is theta complete, done.
I'm not talking of your introductory letter, I'm talking of the letters, the the letter describing two job descriptions that Jeff has done.
I'm gonna write it.
She's gonna write it, why don't you send her the file that has it?
I think Christine's got, gonna get the word from you, right? She's gonna pull it out.
Okay, she might.
Oh, well, that was hard.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up a topic that I think is critically important for this board to discuss.
There's open highlighter, I didn't, oh, it's okay, send it to Mark.
And that relates to the three board members who circulated a petition, and basically changing the policy. Actually, Ed.
I didn't circulate, it was actually, that was my 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 doing, it wasn't, I was the one circulating.
Yes, and there were two other board members who signed.
Correct.
Signed this, including the chairman of the board, which I find, quite frankly, shocking that board members would, and you cannot divorce yourself as private citizens, you are elected planning board members.
Since when can I be the private citizen?
Ed, shut up and listen.
I don't think we said that.
You guys have violated the public, in I can't tell you how many ways, in discussions, there clearly was discussion among the three of you.
No, there was not.
Talking about policy relating to the planning board, assuming site plan review. There were also, in general circulation in this town, four other proposals relating to the HDC reporting to the planning board.
Those were never, I don't know how you.
In general circulation, I got it.
They should not have been in general circulation, I don't know how they got it.
Well, I got it.
Those were ideas that I had, that I I shared with Ed.
It doesn't matter.
Well, it does matter, because I'm, they're not public, you know, that was.
They are, they were public, I got it from a private source.
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
Who sent it to me on.
Those were ideas that were never acted upon.
Except the one for site plan review by the planning board.
Correct.
This means that the three of you were having discussions and engaged in a major public policy change without any public disclosure, no public process, and you violated the open meeting laws in so many ways that I can't even begin to tell you.
I think that's an error.
It's unprofessional, it's discourteous, it's rude to the entire planning board, it's embarrassing, and I, you've basically said to the zoning board of appeals, screw you, we're going to take over that power with no consultation, no communication, no process, and we are now subject to an investigation by the attorney general's office with substantial financial penalties, and I can't believe the naivete, unprofessionalism of this group of people would do this to the planning board, and I'm, it's just unbelievable.
I just think you're wrong, I mean, that's.
It's not what you think, it's what the law is.
Okay, well, that's fine, I mean.
So I'm going to request that we have an emergency meeting to discuss this subject in detail next week and determine how we are going to proceed with this planning board, given the fact that you three have violated the trust of the entire planning board, and you've subjected us to potential legal action by the attorney gen.
If you'd like to know what how this occurred, what happened was they were.
I think we'll wait and have a discussion.
Well, I I'm gonna be on, fortunately, I'm gonna be on vacation next week, so I'm not gonna be here. But I think you should understand that the the warrant was closed last night, and so I would have liked to have had a discussion about it tonight, but that was impossible, because the warrant would have already been closed.
You don't get it, you're not getting it, you have violated.
I don't believe that's correct, I think that's incorrect.
And I don't care what you think, it's what.
Don't don't say that, because you're you're wrong.
No, I'm not, why don't you read the public law that determines what constitutes a conversation and communication among public board members? Because it specifically says, if it looks like, smells like, and sounds like there was private communication by public officials regarding policy of the planning board, you have violated the public notification law. So now you have put us in a position.
Well, you don't want my opinion, so I I don't know why you're even talking to me.
Because you're one of the people that generated the violation.
I generated, I generated the the article, that's correct.
That's right, and you've put us in a legally precarious position.
So three members of the board are not allowed to talk to each other, is that right?
And I also sent, did send a copy of this to.
Just to be clear, is that what you're saying, three members of a seven-member board are not allowed to talk to each other, is that right?
They're not allowed to debate and decide upon public policy.
That was not done, this was purely by me, I did this, I I wrote this and I did.
Obviously, you communicated with Ed and Claudia.
That is not obvious, I also, I also communicated with Peter, and Peter gave me his responses.
That's right, so now we've got a, now we've got a quorum of the board that has now violated.
On a one-to-one basis, I did that.
You don't get it.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. You, you just, you're not getting it. That's what's scary about this.
You could say it, but just say it politely.
I'm tired of being polite. You guys have gone over the edge.
You've made your point.
You've go, no.
You have made your point. Now, what do you want to do, beat us?
Uh, I, I just can't-
You've made your point now. What would you like to do to move on?
I want to have an emergency meeting on Tuesday-
A meeting? Next week? Fine.
For a full disclosure of what happened, with who was involved, what was said, and I want a description of how you think this is going to impact the planning board with the Board of Selectmen, with the ZBA, with the HDC, and how you're going to defend this in public.
We will have to, from my own point of view, and since I did the writing of it, it seems to me that I should be there for this discussion. I have, as I said, I'm gonna be going on vacation, so I won't be here next week. But after, after we, our next meeting, and we can certainly set up a special meeting.
Well, I don't think it can wait for you, Rob, quite frankly, because there's a fourteen-day notification period to the attorney general.
Okay, whatever. I mean, I'm just telling you, that's, that's the, you know, I'm not gonna change my vacation plans because you feel something on this side.
That's fine, that's fine, but there are six other members of this board.
Correct.
And I'd like to know what other people on this board are thinking or feeling, since I've been quite direct about my feelings about this.
Well, he sent an email to me and I answered it with an email to him, just one-to-one. Uh, I told him I thought it was a bad idea to do a citizen petition. And I gave him rationale that for my position for or against each of the things that he, he proposed. And I said, especially on the one that I now find was being circulated for the town warrant, that this is something that was completely off-base, because, you know, it was already brought up, discussed with the ZBA and the chairman, and, and we had discussed it at this board here. And we were going to petition the selectmen for a change, which is what their responsibility is, is to decide who, who does site plan review, and we hold public hearings and, and have a discussion of the pros and cons. But I feel with the zoning board, talk with, talk with them as a group, which, yeah, which was-
Well, that we didn't have a discussion.
I thought Rick did.
He talked about those once.
And what happened with that?
He was bringing it to the board, but that's immaterial. The fact is-
No, when did that happen? About three months ago?
That's immaterial. The fact is that you guys colluded and it violated the law. And nonetheless, in addition to the fact that you have disrespected the other board members, you've violated process, procedure, and the law in doing so. You've embarrassed this board. You've put us in a legally libelous position.
You've made this point. What do you want to do now? You've made the point now.
He wants to have a meeting next week.
I'd like to, well-
He can't be here, so what would you like to do?
Well, that's too bad.
Well, maybe we should have it anyway, if, if there's a fourteen-day disclosure.
Well, then we'll have it anyway.
I'm willing to come next week on Tuesday, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll come to here too. I, I'm troubled by it.
I can't, I can't be here next Tuesday.
Well, since you're gonna be a party to a potential lawsuit, you better be here.
And I won't be here.
But anyway, go ahead. What were you saying, Jeff?
Well, I'm, I, I don't know much about this, Rob, because obviously he didn't contact me. I wasn't involved in it at all.
Right, right.
But, but, uh, there are some issues that need to be addressed and addressed quickly. I don't know what the ramifications are with the attorney general's office, and I don't know what notification provisions there are.
Well, I can provide it to you right, right here. It's very, it's very clear about what happened and the liability that we now face.
We being?
The planning board. It's the public body that is at risk.
The attorney general can fine a body if, five thousand dollars for each offense. And that was the case I gave you a couple of, probably a month ago, to read. Um, when a member, again, and this involves internet and communications online, whether by a subcommittee or a quorum, and even though you might have emailed Peter individually, collectively, if you are debating or deliberating a matter that is an issue that would be normally discussed in a public session of this board, a matter of policy or regulation and permitting is a violation of open meeting laws, to do that kind of conduct online. Ed put a memo, which I put in your folders tonight, asking, gee, about the same issue. Ed continues to be, um, not quite clear on how it is you can communicate with one another outside of the public meeting. And I've encouraged him to say, wait for your meetings. That's what the law says. That's what the attorney general says. They understand there's an internet. They understand how it's being used today. You have a very specific job for this town as members of the board, and you have to respect that and do that when you're here. We can stay till midnight if you need to have more conversations. But when you do things online collectively and you're debating policy, you are running the risk and pushing the envelope. And this last one might have done just that. As Rick's indicating, if it's pursued by the attorney general, they decide whether you've erred and you are worthy of a fine. That is for them to decide. I continue to urge you to wait for your meetings.
Right.
And, and so Ed, but Ed with the memo-
And as I said, I would have accepted it, I knew the warrant was closing, that's the reason.
So, again, if, if your board needs to meet next week, I, I cannot attend. I will bring a recorder for your meeting. Um, I can have somebody else to take minutes for you for that meeting. Um, I serve on the Danvers Planning Board on my other Tuesday nights, so I would not be here.
Does it have to be a Tuesday night, Rick?
No.
Wednesday nights are often other meetings in town here. Thursdays do tend to be freer in town hall.
Hey, you know, if I, if you guys don't think it's worthy of a discussion-
Oh, I, I told you I did.
Uh, that's fine. Uh, I think this is very serious.
Does it make, if there is no endorsement by the planning board, then, then if, I mean, I, if you feel that it's, if it seems to be consensus, if people feel that this should be withdrawn from the warrant, I certainly won't do that, I don't think it's possible to do that.
It's too late. You've done the damage now.
Okay.
The three of you have done the damage. It's not just you.
Well, it is just me, because I, I was the one that wrote it and, and, uh, you know, I mean, Ed happened to be down in, you know, Henderson's and, and, uh, you know, uh, so he signed it, but-
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's that, and it's the fact that now we're basically have alienated, um, other plan, you know, land use boards, uh, we've-
Well, you know, I, I had felt that we had-
Can I ask you about that, just because I'm curious? Do the other boards in town think that this committee did this? That I was involved with? I didn't even sign anything.
Well, that's my point.
That's the way it reads it.
That's my point.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't studied-
I didn't sign either.
Well, you can read into it.
That, that, uh, I got a call from the chairman of the ZBA asking what was going on with the planning board? Why was the planning board suddenly on a, on a mission to extract out their current authority? I said, I can't answer that question. We've never had a public discussion related to this.
That's not true. We have had a public discussion. You went to talk to, to Mr. Bowler.
I never, we never had a discussion about a citizen's petition to-
Not about a citizen's petition, but about the- About the issue of the citizen's petition, we did have a discussion. And that's why I, you know, I felt comfortable doing this, because I felt that there was enough support.
You're not getting it. You're not getting it. It's just, it's like talking to the wall.
Okay, all right.
Would it make sense if, because Claudia can't be here Tuesday night? You know, are you available Thursday, I mean, Thursday?
Thursday, Bob?
Does it, and, and does it make sense to invite the selectmen and the ZBA and the other people who might have been offended by this? You know, so they understand that it wasn't a board action?
Right.
You need forty-eight hours.
It would be Thursday a week.
What do you mean forty-eight? If you were thinking about meeting this Thursday at the-
No, Thursday. Thursday a week.
Is brought back.
No, I'll get back to the eighteen.
But we don't have to punish you. But I do think we ought to do something before the time limit, if that is a real time limit.
Does it make sense for town council to have some knowledge of this so that we don't hang ourselves in a meeting? You know, I'm not suggesting that we do anything different, but I mean, maybe there's a way of doing it in an appropriate way or not appropriately. I don't know, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
Neither do I, and that's why I think this board needs to talk about this and figure out how we manage the damage and potential damage, not only legal damage, but the political damage that, I mean, just think about this. When this comes out, this is gonna come up at town meeting, how do we explain this? I mean, what, what is the, what are the people gonna think? We've got a, we've got a planning board-
If I, no, look, if I represent that I, this is a citizen's, um, article, and this is not, I'm not speaking for the planning board, um, and that the people who signed this were citizens, but-
Yeah, two other planning board members.
Yeah, one, the chairman.
Well-
And the chairman!
Come on, Rob.
No, I mean, I-
No, no, seriously. Think, think about what you're saying there. Three members of the planning board out of the twelve or fourteen that are on that signature, one being chairman, you were the one that circulated.
Well, he agreed. He happened to agree with it, but, but that it should go onto the warrant. I don't see why as a citizen, he can't sign that. I, I understand the implication you're trying to draw from it. I think, I think it's a wrong implication, and, you know, and, and maybe that's what the attorney general will, will-
Well, right, they will, they'll decide that, but it's also the perception of it by other people.
That, I know, well, that's what I mean, perception.
Yeah, I mean, we've now just made, pretty much made ourselves look like a joke, because we have three members who've gone out on their own, without consultation of the planning board, taken a major political policy stance on their own, and we're left holding the bank. I, I just, it's like beyond me, beyond them.
I'm not representing this as, in the planning board. I mean, that's not how this is being done. I, you know, I, I'm not representing-
But what, but what happens at town meeting when, say, four of us get up there? And when it comes up for a vote, say, we don't support this?
That's fine.
Or at least the way it's being done.
That's fine, and I'm not, I'm not representing that the planning board is, is behind us. I mean, I was hoping we could get an endorsement from you, but, but if we can't, then that's fine. But as a citizen, I think I should still be able to, to express myself.
One, one problem is that hypothetically, what if the other four of us agreed with this? You know, we do. And wanted to get it approved at the town meeting? It's the manner in which it was done that makes us look bad, and it will cause problems with the other boards. So my, just to cut, I mean, it's, it's after eleven. Does it make sense then to just agree that we'll have a meeting next Thursday night and invite the selectmen and the ZBA to the meeting to discuss this? So there's some understanding of what transpired? Does that make sense?
Well, so-
I don't know why we need the other boards here. I thought you wanted us to get together and figure out what we should do.
Well, I, I, we can figure that out now.
Well, it's public hearing, so hopefully we need it.
We've got damage control. We've got to get into real quickly, uh, both from a legal standpoint and a political standpoint. And, uh, this is a mess that, um, you know, we got to clean up.
In that sense, maybe we should come up with a solution tonight, and then they can, they can withdraw it. They can say that they, that was a mistake procedurally, and, and they can explain it to some key, um, officials in the town.
To say that that's been, the article, whatever number it is, has been stricken from the warrant, if that's, if that, if you feel that the perception is negative.
Problem is, it's probably been published. I'm not sure.
Uh, it's going to print next week.
So we could withdraw it now?
You could possibly withdraw it.
I think we should.
Well, it's not we.
I think the first thing you ought to do is find out what the legal implications. Call the AG office and find out if he's right, what the ramifications are. I get through this all the time on, on this school committee. I mean, three of us get together and we discuss. We make sure we're not, we're not a quorum. So I'm not quite sure that, that Rick is correct. I would call the AG, I, we do it all the time. We call the office and find, hey, what can we do? What should we do? What's the ramifications? Find out what you gotta do first before you start making decisions.
Well, we've already-
I'm sorry, I'm not a board member. Good advice, though.
That is good.
We've already determined that a quorum was having this discussion, um, so-
That's so, I, I don't know, because I think-
No, a quorum is four.
That's right. Peter was CC, you guys participated in signing this.
No, 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 wait a minute.
He reached out to me as an individual.
But Claudia-
Wait a minute, Claudia didn't know anything about this before, and, and-
Oh, she just, the signature just showed up spontaneously without her consent?
No, we asked, we called her.
Oh, well, gee. So that's a quorum.
That's not a quorum, I mean, it is.
It is. One, two, three, four.
I'm sorry, I'm not implicated.
I'm not implicated in you, you were-
Well, you are. You just pointed at me and said I was in on the thing, and I was not.
I wasn't saying you were in on it.
I told him not to do it. And he called me up and I told him, do not do this.
But it's, there were still four of you that communicated about that.
They were engaged in a conversation?
I was not engaged in a conversation.
Well, okay, you communicated, essentially.
With one individual on the planning board, just like you called me.
It seems to be a very unpopular idea at the moment, so, you know, if, if, if in fact the perception is as negative as you're all saying, you know, I, I will withdraw it. I never put my name on the, on the, you know, as, this was filled out by me for, you know, it was put down as, as citizen group, you know, agreed with this article, so.
And how can you-
So I don't know whether I can withdraw it or how, how that happens.
A citizen petition can be withdrawn by the citizen.
You withdraw it on the floor.
You can withdraw on the floor. If you're lucky, you can withdraw it before.
I'd do it before him.
Okay, I'll, I'll come down and see if I can draw it off.
Check with Gene Weston, the town clerk.
Yeah, it's got a, it's got a stamp on it that says it was received by, at a certain point.
Right, but if it hasn't, it's not going to print.
Do you have a copy of it?
I do have the copy right here.
So-
To determine if the town will approve that site plan review be held under the authority and oversight of the planning board as was previously the case, not under the authority of the zoning board of appeals, or that the town of Hamilton take any other action there, thereon or relative thereto.
So, um, in terms of-
Let's see, I'll present it.
So, let's say you withdraw that petition and you're successful in withdrawing it, then how do we deal with the, uh?
We hold a Thursday night meeting next week and we discuss it with, uh, town council. And we just say we, we're learning something from this.
Do we want to ask the chairman of the zoning board of appeals to explain to him what's going on?
Sure.
Since he was the target?
I think it's politically correct to do that.
Sure.
And how about any selectmen?
Yeah, invite the chairman.
If he wants to come, it's fine.
Okay, so can we schedule that meeting?
I mean, I say that, I'm not gonna be here, but-
What date?
Thursday?
Thursday, next Thursday.
Next Thursday, which is the thirteenth. And you said you'd like to open it up to the selectmen and the ZBA?
Uh, uh, somebody's gonna, let's see, Claudia's not gonna be here.
No, I said Claudia can be here Thursday.
Because somebody's got some explaining to do.
Well, I wish it was more time to, to, as I, as I say, I'd be happy to, you'll want to get back, but I can't.
No, I understand. I just think we need to do some serious fence mending as quickly as possible.
I will read you one section of the open meeting law. Um, I was looking for my internet one, but this one is, is about chants and social meetings. The law does not apply to any chants or social meetings of a government body or members of the body at which matters reflecting official business are discussed so long as no final decision on such business is reached. The law specifically states that chants or social meetings are not to be used to circumvent the letter or spirit of the law by treating them as occasions to discuss or act on a matter within the governmental body's jurisdiction, control, or advisory power. Example, two days after so-called chant or social meeting at which members of a school committee discuss the closing of a school, the school committee convened in an open meeting and without discussion, ratified a determination about the closing that had been reached at the earlier chant meeting. These facts suggest that a chant or social meeting may have been used in circumvention of the requirements of the law.
What about the issue of individual conversations rather than everybody together at the same time?
There's another one about individuals, especially on the internet, and how collectively it becomes.
This was not a final decision. This was, this was to put this on to, to the warrant. It was not just saying that I, I endorsed this. It was not an endorsement by anybody.
Well, one of the things, though, Rob, I guess, and to be clear, one of the roles and responsibilities of the planning board, which we've been going over this year, is that your board oversees the process of amendments to the zoning bylaw through the town meeting process. And you're proposing an amendment to his, you know, bylaw normally, you know, it's, that is a function of your planning board in particular. It's not a function of the conservation commission. That's an actual function of your particular board to hold those hearings, public workshops, so it's.
I, I agree that that, and that, that is my opinion, and, and, you know, and I, I, clearly, according to all the comments, certainly should have brought it up to, to a meeting here. However, in terms of anybody else that has signed on this, all they're doing is saying that, look, this is going to go onto the warrant. This is not an endorsement.
It's difficult where the subject matter pertains to your particular board's power and authority. If you were proposing a citizen petition to, for some other project in town or some other feature, like an open space or the creation of a park, or, I don't know, a great example, but you're, you're talking about a particular power of your board. And like I said, you didn't propose something that affects the conservation commission. This is directly related to the jurisdiction of this body. And again, that's very specifically written into the law, and there are other circumstances that explain very clearly how internet communication, one by one, eventually collectively adds up to a deliberation, even if they don't respond, just distributing it.
Where do you find the law on internet? Because I don't find it here. I find it for at least four or more members.
Attorney General's website, and the open meeting law, and there are guidelines, and it's all in there.
Does it reference the internet?
Yep, yep. Attorney General, Mass General laws. And for those of you who haven't done your certificates, they're due in April. And I think there are a couple of you that are at this table that need to renew those certificates, that say that you've read this.
So Thursday, 7:30 here?
I will do my best to schedule that, meeting availability, and I will email you out tomorrow.
So we're inviting the chairman of the board of selectmen?
No, I think we're inviting all the selectmen and all the ZBA.
And all of the ZBA. And who's going to explain this?
Um, I'd suggest that you do it, because.
I don't think so.
Well, I mean, we can have.
Rick, would you, would you like to propose your request in writing to me?
Yes.
The reason for your request of the meeting, and that will be your position statement. And Rob, if you could just submit the petition that's been signed or forward that, so I have a copy of that for the materials for the meeting.
I have it here because it was sent to me. I don't know how I got it, but it came to my email.
Send extra. Thank you.
And part of that discussion will be.
This is the art, this is the actual article. This is the only thing that's of any relevance.
That's it for me.
So, Rob, you're going to do what?
I'm, I'm not going to do anything else. I mean, this is.
It'll be recorded.
You're not going to withdraw it?
I will withdraw it tomorrow, yes. I will try to withdraw it if I can. I'm not sure I'll be able to. I'll let you, you and Christine know what, what happens.
Are we doing a Blackrock review at some point? Because we sort of took that as something we wanted to do before we started the public hearings? And so that issue was put to bed?
I had met with Frank Tavars, the applicant for Canterbury, and, and kind of discussed with him a few ways that he can present his zoning and yield analysis, which he will do at the next meeting, that will help the board and the community understand the zoning involved. Hopefully that'll work.
Well, I think we'll end up back talking about GPOD and what takes precedence and how that impacts.
Well, I suggested we do the exercise again, just because I thought Jeff would benefit from it. Maybe he's had a chance to do it anyway.
I haven't, but I thought we all decided it would be a good idea for everyone, in addition to me.
Well, because there are three members of the board that didn't agree with the four that reached certain conclusions. I think we ought to have, I mean, I remember Claudia saying, this is the hot, this is the key issue. But she said in a public hearing.
I think it is a huge issue.
Well, we'll see if we can work it in. You've got three site plans to continue, and one opening next week, so. A learning exercise, you know, take, take a good look, and if you have questions, you can, that you can email me if you have questions on the zoning.
And the conclusions that we reached, and my conclusions, but I mean, I would be willing, if we're going to have a special meeting, you know, I'd set aside a half hour.
I'm not available on Thursday. My son's birthday.
Yeah, I think we ought to keep one topic, not.
I know it, but I'd rather do the, the more stuff I can.
We're not going to have time on it, but.
Can you close this?
Review, review for me what's, what's scheduled and planned, please.
For the next meeting?
For Thursday?
Rob is going to withdraw his petition.
Correct.
That's correct. And it's going to be a meeting next Thursday to do what?
Review the public meeting laws with respect to.
Well, we're going to invite the Board of Selectmen and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and either you, Ed, or Claudia are going to describe what happened, why it happened, and why it won't happen again.
Well, I, we, he's not going to be. I can tell you that I signed it. That's it.
You're not getting it, Claudia.
Please don't say I'm not getting it, Rick.
Well, clearly you are, because you've put the board.
That's, that's all that happened with Claudia.
That's all I did. So don't say I'm not getting it, Rick.
There was nothing, there was no other interaction, Rick. There was no discussion, okay?
Yeah, oh, no discussion?
No, there wasn't.
She just signed it.
She did. She looked at it and signed it.
As an elected official, she decided a major policy.
As a, as a citizen, she signed it. That's all that happened.
Maybe it's not a technical violation of the law, but it sure is a political, it's extracting, it's going to extract.
It may be, but it's not.
Political damage. It's amazing the level of.
Well, I'm saying he's not going to be here, so what do you expect to accomplish on Thursday? You're saying, Claudia, you and Ed have to speak. What would you like me to say?
You are going to speak, because you are a signatory to a.
I signed a piece of paper. That's what I can say.
As an elected official, you signed a piece of paper.
Yes, I did.
That was a direct policy position, and that reflected back on you and the board. So you need to explain why you decided that it was appropriate to go take the ZBA authority away without any consultation with the ZBA. It's common courtesy. It's called professionalism.
There was a, there was a connection that you made with him that went nowhere, Rick.
Not a site, not a citizen's petition to just arbitrarily.
I'm not talking about the petition. I'm talking about the site plan review discussion.
Yes, and we started.
And with the ZBA.
I recommend that Ed actually be the one who takes the, the fall, so to speak, because he collaborated with Rob, and they both signed the petition. So I think, you know, the chairman of the board ought to say to the other board members why this was right or wrong, and, and let's have it at it, and see where, where the cookie grumbles. I'm, I'm concerned, because I don't think the chairman should be doing that sort of thing. And we have to learn from what we're doing.
Right, right, right. I mean, beyond being planning board members, we are citizens of the town. And that's the only argument, I think, that comes into this, you know, that's, that's the basis for.
We're held to a higher standard. We can't just be wandering around going, well, okay.
We're not just wandering around. We, we hopefully have a little knowledge about what is going on in town, because, you know, that should be helpful. We're trying to help the town. That's the bottom line.
Agreed. We're all trying to help the town, but we're all part of a planning board that has a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to act in a responsible.
Right, and I thought this was a responsible way.
Public manner.
I thought this was a responsible, public thing to do.
As a private citizen, it would have been, but not as a publicly elected planning board member.
Well, okay.
So let's, let's end this meeting.
Well, I still recommend that Ed be the one that speaks to the other board.
Well, I think that hopefully by playing back some of this, though, these people will get some sense of where I'm coming from and why it was done the way it was done. I mean, you know, I, I think it was a mistake, given the reaction, but, you know, as, as far as I'm concerned, it was, you know, it was, I thought it was the right thing to do at the time, that's all, so.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Do we, do we need a motion on the extra meeting first, though?
No.
No.
My motion's stopped.
I seconded it.
I moved to adjourn.
He moved to adjourn. I second.
You voted.
All those in favor?
Aye.